The flexibility is something you actually can be consistent at.
Yeah.
And part of consistence is cycles. So, consistent can be a sine wave is consistent. It's not straight. It has ups and downs. It has changes in it, but it's consistent. You know what to expect.
Mayor?
Yep.
Can you interrupt just a moment?
Absolutely.
I need to excuse myself for a few minutes to go get some medication.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to return for the executive session. I think I'll be gone about fifteen or twenty minutes. So, can I get back in?
Uh, so...
How do we do that?
I'm a bag.
The door's open.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Stein is leaving, momentarily leaving, the meeting at eight oh nine.
Can we take a break?
Yeah.
And we're gonna take a recess also at eight oh nine.
Executive session.
I don't think we're really gonna get there in fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Since you come back in.
Oh, very good. Thank y'all. Sorry for the interruption.
Right.
We're taking a recess?
Yeah, brief recess.
Brief recess?
Yes.
Awesome, that's a body.
I knew Herb wanted a recess, that's why I asked.
I was anxious as well.
Thank you.
Tell me to hurry if I have to do that.
Joe, you're gonna miss the...
I love that woman.
Yeah. Now it's back, he's going in and out.
The streaming is going in and out, sorry.
He said five, four, three, two, one, it went off, and then it came back on. He said that we were five minutes into the future.
Right.
Thanks for hanging out with us.
Okay. Alright.
Thanks for keeping it there.
Alright, I'll leave now. Joe said it went off, it did five, four, three, two, one, went off, and then when it came back on, we were like five, ten minutes further down the road.
Cause I watched the picture.
Yeah.
Picture on the whole time, like you.
Yeah, me, he was watching that, so...
It's evil. Sorry, you don't want to see.
Oh.
This light on here, you know, it's supposed to be there. In my office, when I put stuff up on the website, it just thinks like it's dollar. And it's like, I don't know what the deal is.
Well, it also may have to do with how many other people using it from there.
Right. Did Christopher get a chance to plug in?
Well, I had that question, you know, I hope he's out of the street. I was only joking. I mean, I always try to...
Up there, man.
The army gets up in the morning to get this wall.
That'd be weird.
I spent a week, we had a...
I didn't say anything about this first, I'm done.
We have a group that comes up from Ann and Corpus Christi for a summer sort of camp, basically. They're camped out.
Today?
Three hundred day per act, Patrick.
No. I just said that it was Christopher calling, and I sat down.
I decided not to.
Yeah, I didn't say anything, I didn't mention him again.
Food, so, that's three hours on the road every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes for a long day.
I'm here.
I'm just feeling a little brought out. Yeah, I came in at five this morning, cause we have, we have two guys that's...
That's December, huh?
Who's in at five.
You're watching our one?
Six o'clock guy, probably sick. So, I told the five o'clock guy, I said, "Morning, bud, I'm coming in at five this morning." And then Chief would go in and ask, "Hey, can you look for..."
Oh, wow.
He goes, "It shouldn't take long." I'm like, "I'll do that."
Sure, why not?
I go back at six more in the morning. I'm like, "I'm hoping for the executive session, you're pretty quick, I think we..."
Alright, so...
Yeah, I didn't know how detailed he was gonna get on the strategic planning thing, but unfortunately, uh...
He knows, he knows.
I think you're timed out.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I'll let him know.
I was almost gonna say something else. Isn't this workshop, aren't we? Should we be doing this in the session?
Yeah, there might be something.
Okay. Alright, work set. Yeah.
This is like workshop.
You've got the...
Hey, Gerald? Huh? We have another one? Yeah, we're already sitting. I didn't see you there.
I know.
Alrighty.
Good?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know what I mean.
See, I have gear for this, huh?
This is, this is one thing I have for my oil agency.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah, cause I wear the Albertus here.
Okay, so you don't see my...
Yeah. But, I got so hot with the...
Yes.
With the stolen truck, it's heroin.
I just heard me, I go. Yeah, pretty crazy. Alright, well, I just wanted to call you back to see if you got a way. Okay, alright. We're good. For dinner? Our next thing that we're going into is executive session, so no telling. Yeah, go ahead and eat. Cause we got four items we'll be discussing in the executive session, so... Correct. So, alrighty, let me to...
On the second block, we have this big backyard, dump load of gravel to... And we don't have any...
Yeah, there is, we don't.
We gotta control it. Anyway, I was just moving into boxes today, granted, I am not in good shape. I was drenched.
If you hear this, it'll give us that.
Yeah, it's like, John, like, why didn't Jason Bruce come back? Why isn't he so early?
Cause we have that, you have to take, truck in there, it's hot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, no, no.
We couldn't wait until March to get out.
Yeah, we had, oh, yeah.
That's it, it's a pan double.
But I was like, never, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes.
Why didn't he move down there? He's walking, he's on the street.
Yeah, I've committed, I will finish it, but it has not been any sooner than this.
I heard his field and, uh...
Elliot? Yeah.
And where are you at? It's quite a male figure.
Yeah.
Actually, he's right.
The, the door you guys go in, the driveway, that was your bedroom.
I tried to take that door off. Oh, no, 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 the garage door, I tried, you're talking about the other one, that's for my, that's for my daughter.
Yeah.
I had been loading my truck, you know, the driveway the whole time.
Yeah.
And then my wife lets do something, I always put it in the garage, I did. And it puts stuff in it, and it clears the doors, but when my truck went this...
It didn't?
It didn't anymore.
That's why they never put their mini van in that garage, that garage, going, you all have vehicles that, what, you got a garage for motorcycles? And then you got some, something to pull it down.
I've got the car candy up there.
I'll just, I'll have some nerve, that's...
I offered to carry.
I could go in there and see them.
We did too.
I've just had them a few days here. I think tomorrows last forever.
Well, I'm trying to deal with it, maybe, oh, yeah, maybe if I could just... We, we should, we just take... Eat off some of the... How do they wait? Do you remember, uh, does the challenge get off and...
I hear it, yeah.
A woman and mom is like, "Go."
I know. I'm going off to the election, I'll send them all tomorrow, so, so, but stuff do not, we can talk fast. They don't ever give you the handouts anymore, and, uh, so you have, no, so you download them or you print them. And I ended, and they don't have white ball, we always, I mean, you know, I printed them off, and it's seven hundred and seventy pages if I printed everyone on mine. And, of course, I pick and choose where I'm gonna go, but I was like...
Alright, I'm gonna go.
So now they cut holes in them, they don't activate them with the mail truck.
We have a minute, it's not till February fourth, but if you wanna message that.
Thank you.
Hey, have you moved Jackie down, or are you in the process?
We're in the process.
We're in the process. Uh, they moved the center. We also, uh...
Let me know if you wanna borrow my trailer.
Okay.
You have a bunch of things on us.
Alright.
Let me know if you wanna borrow my trailer that's behind my building.
I'll make sure I put that on.
It's previous size, it can fit our fifty-four inch, uh, John Deere fifty-four inch deck lawnmower on it.
I'm gonna come to the law.
Alright.
Ali was joking when I told, uh, Priscilla and them to go home. She was freezing, and I said, "I'm gonna turn this up," and I said, "Well, y'all wanna go home," and that is. I was like, "Oh, my God."
It scampers.
Alright.
Is your battery up?
I'm gonna go.
Joe, Joe said it jumped while he was watching it. It jumped to the December meeting, and then jumped back.
Wow, weird.
Yeah, I know. That was, that was pretty weird.
We got hacked.
Alright, we're gonna reconvene at eight eighteen?
You know what?
I don't.
Apparently, it stopped. I didn't mess with it, but I left it alone, and now it's showing ten minutes, and it's going on in and out, so I don't know if it's all Wi-Fi. But, this is, it may have stopped, and now it's back up, but, that's odd.
Are we playing and recording right now?
It says connection strength is perfect.
Yeah, but it's showing ten minutes, instead of, it was, well, ago, it was two hours or something.
Yeah, it's...
So, it probably just restarted another stream?
Uh, maybe.
Alright.
I've never seen that happen, but, okay. Long as I'm...
We got feedback, so...
Uh, but yes, our audio is back up, so if you wanna reconvene.
Alright.
Alright, so we're gonna go, um, the next thing is vision and...
Reconvene the meeting, sir?
Yeah.
Big meeting.
Yeah, I did.
I'm sorry.
Uh, we're reconvening at eight nineteen now.
Sorry.
Was it eight eighteen?
Didn't hear it. It's midnight, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, so the next one is talking about vision and mission. So, the vision elements, do we need to go through this? Yeah, let's go ahead and go through. What's that? You see any...
Not your time.
Let me know if there's any...
I'm, I'm good, I'm listening, it's your, it's your time.
Alright, so, these are the key elements in, in the vision for, the, the city council vision for Castroville. Um, they are as follows. Want Castroville to be the same as it was, but better overall. That is unique. Keep its original, originality, which is small-town Texas. Maintain its historical significance. I'm gonna go through all of these, well, actually, I'll go through all of these, let me know if there's anything on here that you wanna challenge, add or remove. Uh, next one is community. That is passionate, involved people working, playing, and volunteering together. To live without duress, which is easing of transportation, having open and green space, not just an asphalt jungle, and pedestrian oriented, pedestrian oriented so that it has walkability. To be able to shop and purchase what I need in Castroville. To have quality medical care. To use our natural resources, including the river, to its fullest potential. To have well-thought-out, considerate, and compassionate, growth-sensitive, growth-sensitive to and complimentary of its surroundings, which includes a vernacular architecture. It inspires a passion among the citizens. It has a community gathering place, has community gathering places for seniors and children. Maintains the small-town tranquility. Approximate, but not the big city, yes. Okay, that makes sense. Reasonable taxation. A remarkable community. People, structures, and its beauty. People see and comment positively about it. Extraordinary and safe schools. To have what is represented by our churches, faith, cemeteries, schools. A city with churches at the moral center. Community gathering places to keep the traditions of the community alive, and a place attractive to the arts and artisans. Is there any of that that you do not feel is still applicable or, or true? Alright, I'm gonna move on to community values. So, these are the values that, that, uh, that council had identified as the key values of the community. So, we believe that the values are being friendly and welcoming, family, uh, having a historic tradition of the city, togetherness and community, fun activities, liberty, personal investment engagement in the community, recognizing and leveraging our natural resources, holding fast to its historic Christian values, and having a balance of quiet enjoyment and public amenities. Are there any of those that you want to challenge or change? I will say, what's been interesting in the, in these, the values that we had identified as we went through the journey lecture series, uh, they were, this, these are common elements that they had called out, that others, they came in and evaluated what was really kinda cool about the city, are these exact same things.
They saw it.
They saw it, right.
You got, you have external validation, is what that's called.
Yep. We came up with the, the updated mission statement, and that is preserve Castroville's rich culture, historic architecture, and natural environment, so that the friends, so that friends and family can continue to enjoy a true community, steeped with a pioneering spirit and camaraderie. Is there anything that you don't agree about that?
I can.
Okay. Organizational values, and again, these, we'll, we'll go back and we'll, we'll hit this again, let's, uh, if we want to change them going forward. Uh, but what we had come up with was the acronym SERVE, which is, um, we are stewards, we are empowering, we are responsible, we are visionary, and we are excellent. And those we had, um, kind of, uh, categorized with a description behind each one. Service is characterized by these descriptive values, and that is leadership, selflessness, fairness, respect, optimism, sacrifice, heritage, and devotion. Is there anything that you feel should change or be added to that? Okay. Uh, then moving on to the strategic planning, so, uh, the SWOT analysis. The strengths were identified as involved and invested families, rich history and heritage with generational family lineages. Location, which is proximate, proximity to cities' medical and entertainment, exemptant of diverse cultures, helpful, the river, the airport, proximity to military bases, the emergency services district, city-owned utilities, electric, gas, water, and wastewater. The town center, strong traditions, and quality school system. Finally, a community interested in their overall health. Do, does everybody agree with those strengths, want to add to those, or feel like, um, any of those have changed?
Are you good with it?
Right.
You know, another strength, I don't know.
What's that?
So far, we find out the developers are willing to work with us to, uh, to enhance their developments. Does that make sense?
Alright, so, maybe one of our strengths is a willingness to cooperate, or to, to create a partnership with our, both our businesses and development community.
Well, I guess, you know, like this cobblestone, excuse me, yeah, like cobblestone, where they were willing, I mean, yes, it's a, you scratched my back, I scratched yours, but, I guess, they realize, one of our strengths is, is that the, the development community realizes the advan, the advantages to, to cooperate with the city to enhance their developments. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah. But that's what I'm saying, I think, I think what you're hitting at is, you're saying, one of the strengths that the city has to offer, and, and not, not to pick on any community, but, you know, name another community in the county, pick any one of them. Um, you know, are they as reasonable and willing to partner with developers and businesses to the mutual benefit of both?
Our vision is contagious.
So, how do we say that? Cause I think that's a strength.
A strength is council's willingness to proactively partner with others to enhance mutual benefit. And what did you say?
Our vision is contagious.
Yeah, I'm gonna put that as a separate item. Does anybody disagree with that? Our vision is contagious?
That's what we've seen.
Yep.
We're hoping that it's really contagious, won't we, the text?
Really contagious.
Uh, so I'm gonna add to the other one, to enhance mutual benefit and benefit to the, to the greater city. Mutual benefit between council and others, outside others, to, uh, enhance mutual benefit and benefit to the greater city. So, we're working with them to enhance what they're doing, what we want, and what the community needs.
Everybody else.
The whole city concept.
Anybody disagree with that? Okay.
Yeah, there's one.
Yep.
We got a strike on that.
We got one on this list we need to pick off.
Actually, so this one...
We actually addressed a few.
Yeah.
I think, no, I'm at strength still. And, um... I would say, one of our strengths is our willingness to, um, to communicate the hard issues and hit them head-on. If we think about...
No fear.
Yeah, no fear. It's, it's hitting the, the hard issues. We've had some hard issues with the river, flood, power, potentially in the front, potentially in the back. We've had to deal with the airport zoning board, and some of the, the issues that that had caused, some of the public animosity. We've had to deal with some, some personnel challenges. Uh, we've had to deal with quite a few different things, but every single one of them, uh, I think that to everybody's credit, we have hit those head-on, we've addressed them, and we fixed them, and I think that that ultimately builds more and more trust with the community. So, willingness to communicate and hit the hard issues.
Head-on.
Head-on. Is that acceptable? Okay. Anything else there? And I think that we'll find more. I think that, I think the council has found some really good success in this. Okay, um, so weaknesses. Limited procedure for code compliance. Employee retention. Is that still an issue, Scott?
We'll see.
Okay.
We've got, you know, when I, we did that headcount, I think I told you, we had Thanksgiving, um, we had all our employees over at the RV building, and I had people stand up and say their name, and say what department they're in, and how long they've been with the city. And I'll be honest, I didn't realize until that moment how many, something like sixty, seventy percent of our employees have two years or less with the city.
Yep.
It's, it's a lot. But, it's getting better, and, um, time will tell if we, if we're at the right spot.
Then we need to leave it on, alright.
It's getting better, better every day.
It's still a goal, even if it's ten years or more.
Yep.
Backing up on if you're finished with that, what's limited procedures for code compliance? I don't understand.
So, the, what we had talked about with that was, um, so when we have code compliance issues, the follow-up to that, the, uh, the ability to, um, to track it to completion, I think that we're getting better. I don't think that we're there, I think it's still a weakness.
So, we were also talking about the fact that, that some people, if they, if they're looking at any kind of variance or applications, oftentimes have to, three, four meetings before they can get to where they wanna go, so, that's another issue.
Okay, I'm gonna note that here.
But is that, is that code, like they're, I mean, they violated the code and they're trying to correct it, or...
Or, or just trying to get a variance or instances.
Our variance procedure, well, I think that...
Another, anyone, you can just append it, there's, there's steps, there's two, three steps, you can take, you can...
I wanna, I wanna come back to that one, cause I wanna run through the rest of them, see how many of those apply to that, and then we'll come back to that one, is that right?
I don't need.
Alright, perfect. Disaster preparedness lacking. I think it's getting better.
But it's still on there.
We're still, yeah, it needs to stay there.
We still got a ways to go.
PD's facilities haven't gotten any better.
No, same with the fire department.
Yep.
Volunteer fire department, I was like, VFT, virtual... Uh, no shelters in emergencies. I don't know that that's a hundred percent correct, but let's leave that on there.
We don't have any agreements for, to activate, so it's, it's accurate.
Yep, let's leave that there.
Until we have our agreements and that, for, to activate a shelter.
Um, I would say that the next one, no venues for youth, uh, for young adults and children, I think it's actually limited venues, not no venues, cause there are venues.
We've added a little, yeah.
Yeah.
There are additional park things.
You're not being hard on the community as you were in May.
What's that?
You're not being as hard on yourselves or the community as you were in May.
Well, we've got lighted fields at the, at the park, we've got new playgrounds, and we got a splash pad, that's, that's progress.
How about limited? Limited venues?
Limited, yeah.
Okay.
Limited sheltering space too, I guess, because there are, the new bathrooms we purchased are, you can cram sixty people in them if you wanted to.
I don't want to. I don't wanna cram into the bathrooms myself, I'm fifty-nine in my...
Technically, City Hall is, um, it's got a giant wall.
Oh, yeah, I know this is the control, control center, yeah.
I am not coming in here during an emergency, cause I know what's going on with that roof. The roof is too, is...
Oh, I come here in a heartbeat, cause this building's just...
Yeah. I'll go in the vault.
Yeah, yeah. Get away from the windows.
Suffocated around.
One is, you said no, and y'all changed it to limited.
I did the same.
Maybe, do the same thing on that.
But these aren't city-owned facilities, like you say, no shelters in emergencies, and machine, I know what you're saying, but it's really for the ESD to set up deals with, for instance, for the hall, and, and the church.
But that's all part of our disaster preparedness, because that's part of our plan, and we have to have an agreement.
I'm gonna move us forward on that, because I think that, I agree with that, we have limited shelters in emergencies. Uh, let the record show that Councilman Stein has returned at eight thirty-four.
We did not went to executive session.
We have not gone to executive session.
We do again have venues for young adults and children.
Limited. So, we changed both of those to limited shelters in emergencies, limited venues for young adults and children, and...
Working on.
So, these are things that we, they're weaknesses, we need to work on. Uh, community not accepting to outsiders.
We're still there.
Still there. Highway ninety through middle of town, I think that we should highlight that, and asterisk it, and...
Old letters.
And it's, it's getting worse, and we'll talk about that in a bit. Uh, layout of the city along the river. Aging infrastructure.
Alright.
Getting better, but we're, yeah. Uh, integrating those already here with those to come, definitely still a, a challenge. Uh, lack of medical care, again, that's getting better with Medina, uh, but, still not...
Correct.
Still not quite there.
We added a few practitioners in around town, that's good.
Yeah.
Lack of retail choices, for sure. No protection from the southern border.
Oh, yeah.
Still the case. No local, local community college, lack of businesses, which, again, we're addressing that, um, in our partnership with the chamber. By the way, I am giving a, kind of a state of the city, similar, if you saw what was in the paper, similar to that, to the chamber tomorrow, at the luncheon, if you'd like to go. The community, uh, no community center for seniors, kids, and athletes.
You gonna give an update on that, cause I saw in the newspaper about the...
The community center?
About the community center.
Yeah, it is still a weakness, cause we haven't built it yet.
I understand, however.
Yep.
Strike the next one.
Yep, strike the next one.
Yes, yes.
I don't think you should strike it, I think you should change it to no competition-certified pool. All we have is a training pool.
Is that a weakness?
Yes, big weakness, you can't have any competitions.
I don't think it's, I'm gonna challenge that, I don't think it's a weakness. I think it is part of what we aspirationally would want to accomplish, but there is no weakness to the city, there's no negative impact to the city by not doing that.
True, there is, you can't hold a competition. You can't, right, you can't bring any other schools in here to compete.
But that's not a weakness, that is...
It is.
I, I, actually, I agree with you, I think it is a weakness, that'd be like us redoing the baseball fields, where they weren't tournament acceptable.
We got heat, but we still provide our own pool.
We would provide our children a place to practice baseball, but we would, we would rob the community of, uh, focus. I think same thing with swimming.
Okay, so...
And I don't...
No, that's good.
Yeah, okay, I, I think there's an opportunity there, if you have competitive level facilities. Yeah, most tournaments and competitions.
How about if we do?
Bring people to town.
I would, I would also say that you have an aging pool facility, which is what I heard Herb say.
Oh, aging.
You heated a pool, but it hasn't changed the age of that pool, that pool is very old. It's, the infrastructure and the surrounding buildings and the layout.
Needs to be redone.
They're all, they're all in need of some leveling.
So, didn't strike it, we edited it.
Yeah, okay, so aging pool and facility.
And can I take a moment to back up on one of the bullet points, I'm quick.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify the, this one really quickly, so, lack of competitive sports, um, accommodations?
Oh, swimming.
Swimming.
Well, swimming, we don't have anything for competitive soccer.
Water, how about water?
Anything for competitive baseball, we have hobby only, so, I think that it is a lack of competitive sports facilities.
Okay, I would agree with that.
Okay.
And we can, we can itemize underneath that, but I think that it is.
No, no, that's fine.
True, okay. All right, um, so going back to.
Yeah, I just, uh, and I remember being on the discussion, the community not being accepted of outsiders. I know that, at the time, revolved around the focus of Alsatian heritage. It was hard for somebody from outside that heritage to make a home in this town at one time. I'd like to see that bullet point stated, stayed, but let's think about the outsiders that would utilize our, our city. I don't exactly, so the people that don't live in Casterville, but there's a mutual benefit from them being here. I'm thinking the airport, guys, things like that. So, we're careful that we're not unaccepting of somebody just because they're not police citizen.
Well, so.
I mean.
Oh, so you're saying, well, this is a, this, I'm sorry, this is a recognition of the weaknesses that exist within the city.
Right.
And what you're saying is that being unaccepting of outsiders is typically taken in the vein of thinking about Alsatians accepting new move-ins.
Right.
And what you're saying is, there's also a weakness within the city to accept people who may are, only be here because they're, they own a business here, but they're not, they don't live here, um, or they, at the airport and they utilize the airport facilities, but they don't pay taxes here. So, uh, there's, one of our weaknesses is, is to, to not cultivate a sense of community with the stakeholder groups that are not taxpayers. Does that make sense?
Something along that lines, yeah.
So, I would, and I'll tell you my personal experience.
Yeah.
My personal experience coming here, um, is very different than it has been for other people. Mine was phenomenal. I mean, from the moment that I moved here, everybody was welcoming and they were friendly and they were helpful and they took me under their wing and they put me to work right away. Um, they're like, hi, welcome to Casterville. Here's your volunteer form. But it's, it's that, like, I experienced something completely different. But in any small town, I think that you have a certain level of not accepting of outsiders.
Sure, and I think it's changed. It is in the process of changing.
And I think that maybe what we do.
Because it still exists.
But not specifying Alsatians.
Military families.
No, no, he's not saying.
He's saying that we need to add, forgive me here, are, are, am I stating this correctly though?
Not accepting to outsiders and non-residents.
We need to add another weakness, and that weakness is a, uh, not creating a sense of community. So, the weakness is, we are not creating a sense of community with stakeholders who are not tax, taxpayers. So, and that, that would be business owners, that would be anybody that doesn't live there, but is still a stakeholder. It's a person who has an interest in the city. The new, you know, the new business next door, I'm not saying that they aren't being welcomed, but, you know, that would be a good example, someone who is a stakeholder, has, has an interest in the city and the well-being of the city, but may not, may not be accepted within the community, 'cause we aren't focusing on that.
Community not accepting to outsiders and non-resident stakeholders.
Yeah. Is that, was that what you?
Something along that lines. And I'll, I'll tell you what brought it to mind. I was at the airport meeting last night, and some people were making some very good comments, very good discussion going on. And I guess it dawned on me while I sat there that I didn't have a single constituent in that room. Right? They're stakeholders, but I didn't have a single voting constituent in that room at that meeting. And I kinda relate to you earlier, you know, I mean, so, if, we need to be aware, sensitive, accepting, I don't know what the proper wording is.
Well, I think that we identified.
That's what they're to us.
Uh, these are opportunities. Remember that when we get to opportunities. Is that all right?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I gotta say something. I have not talked to anybody in the last five years that said they had moved to this town, including, I mean, I'm older than that, but I've never, I have not read of anybody that said, oh, this town's not friendly to outsiders.
Oh, it's bad, it was so bad.
It was bad.
But I don't think it's that way today.
No, I, I agree with you.
When, when we, when we first moved here.
But how long was that?
Well, that was seventeen years ago.
Yeah.
But it still happens with some of the military families I know, they still get it.
Within the last five years.
Within the last five years.
Okay, so I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm gonna move this on. We can revisit that in the thing, and I think that, I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen around that, but let's, let's do that in our session.
Ms. Presson.
So it says, no infrastructure east of the city, and I would say, change that again to limited. Uh, weakness is staffing will soon be inadequate. That is totally the same. Um, now, the next one, I want to restate this. It says, no preparation for home rule. I would say, home rule.
But need preparation for home.
Yeah, yeah, need.
It'll be here soon.
Well, and part of that is, yeah.
Well, I think, Carol, and some of the, you're saying, hitting on it, when you're identifying weaknesses, a lot of times you're also identifying opportunities. You're saying, here's some things that I think are broken.
Yep.
And here's some things I think we can fix.
Yep.
We have limited control over county lands surrounding the city, still the same. Potential airport noise. You know, I, I don't know that, um, I, I think we leave it on there, but I, I would challenge that. I don't, I have not heard a single complaint about.
Yes, potential.
We have that new development going up beside it.
Yep.
The other day I heard, I heard a very loud prop plane leaving, and I looked up and it was a World War II B-52 Mustang.
Yep.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, and it roared.
It's wonderful sound. I love it.
Uh, next one is retirees with limited income. That is definitely a weakness. Uh, no utility infrastructure west side of the airport runway. Limited rooftops to pay for debt management. I would actually change rooftops to.
Tax base.
Tax base.
Mm-hmm.
As we learned that rooftops only make up, what do we say, eleven percent? Resistance to change?
That's everybody.
That's a strength and a weakness.
Yep.
Uh, no businesses along the river. I don't know that that's a weakness, and I don't believe that Councilman Dyer agrees with that. I don't think it's a weakness.
I think it's a big weakness.
Okay. Do we leave that on as a weakness, or do we strike that?
I would have to leave it on.
Let's leave that on, and we can revisit it in our, uh, next session if we decide. Uh, river divides infrastructure and bottlenecks traffic. Absolutely. No news, I would not say no newspaper, no dedicated.
No hometown newspapers.
Yes.
Oh, I like that.
I don't consider the two pages we get at a Honda.
Yeah, yeah. It's not like it was.
Two pages? Because you could go count up the advertising for Honda, count up the advertising for Captain One.
Uh, so we also have aging infrastructure. That is being rectified, but still gonna be with us for a long time. Uh, difficulty with community engagement. I think we've engaged pretty well. Do we still have, no, I think it's still, I, I think it's still.
Room for improvement.
Room for improvement. Yeah, I love this. U.S. ninety is a weakness. Thank you. Um, drainage improvement needs.
Oh yeah.
Highlight asterisk, asterisk. Limited public access to the river.
Yep.
Again, I'm gonna challenge that, but that's me personally, so I'll be shut up about that. Um, few staff with institutional knowledge.
Sixty percent.
Resistance.
High turnover.
Yeah.
Wait. We have resistance to change twice, so I'm gonna strike one. I just wanted to strike something. We are a speed bump on the road to the west, not a stopping point.
Yep.
Lack of art, arts and artisans. I, that's artist. And artisans. Few choices in restaurants and one fewer.
Yes.
And then.
Yes, chicken, chicken, and chicken.
Strength is no lack of chicken. Uh, lack of lodging for travelers.
Yes.
Lack of clear vision throughout the community will always be the case.
We did it said about the hotel up for sale.
I didn't correct him. I can tell you about it later.
They don't want to put it up for sale.
Staff is too small, still there. Uh, many staff lack shared values and ownership of vision. Is that still the case, Scott?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Good.
We, we need to, we need to solidify our vision and values, and then we need to work on how we market them, 'cause basically it's a sales job.
Yep.
To the community, to ourselves, to this organization.
Agreed.
That's in its very fledgling stages at this moment.
Issues with enforcement of codes, I think is still an issue.
Yes. The junkyard's getting bigger, yeah.
Communication needs improvement, although we have made great, city staff has made great strides, but that's still a weakness.
It'll always be.
Yeah. Low pay for staff, limited city limits. Limited city limits.
These are pretty small. Hard city limits are pretty confined, tiny area.
Confined city then, about over the, I don't know.
Limited, I'll leave it. Limited availability, available retail and business space.
I'm sorry, low pay for staff. Limited city.
There are two items.
Two bullets?
That's two bullets.
Two bullets.
And low pay for staff is relative. I mean, we're competing against San Antonio.
Right.
So, if you're talking about trying to recruit a police officer, uh, good luck.
How about pay lower than.
Surrounding area.
San Antonio.
Well, even Honda. I'd say surrounding area.
Is it lower than a Honda?
Yeah.
Well, we're getting close. But we're getting, depends on the position. We're getting a lot closer to being.
I'd say surrounding area.
Because it may not necessarily be city jobs.
Right.
We've had a few that went to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Take off Santa. Pay lower than surrounding area staff. Okay? I moved li, limited city limits to a different item. Limited availability of retail and business space is still the case. Large ISD.
Yep.
Uh, absolutely the same. Facilities are old and out of date, absolutely the same. Is there anything else that we are missing here? Okay, opportunities.
Just, uh, turn that other list upside down.
Yes. Strategically plan to grow our infrastructure rather than wait on the growth. Plan rather than catch up. That is definitely an opportunity. Uh, anticipated growth, uh, create, sorry, I went out of order. Create and execute a plan that attracts, uh, who we want to live here as opposed to responding to the market. Um, that's, that's a bit of a tricky statement, but I think that's still our plan. Plan now for home rule. Uh, focus on ways to incentivize business expansion, medical, retail, and restaurants. Uh, other opportunities include, uh, use growth to leverage the expansion and rebuilding of infrastructure. Add new staff with growth. Leverage and add tourism. Rethink, um, how and where we build to use growth for improvements. Amend zoning and land use for growth. Build Highway ninety bypass. Create strategy to attract medical investment. Leverage city influence to add retail. Solicite a community col, community college. Promote river development. I'm gonna question that. Do we need to leave that on there?
Why not?
Do we need to provoke, promote river development?
If it's a weakness that there's no businesses along the river and that's on your list.
Then we will leave it on.
Yeah.
All right. Good point, thank you. Increased aging infrastructure, increased aging infrastructure improvements, still an opportunity. Implement community facility building and green space. Getting closer?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, create a city facility strategy and plan. Issue debt while it is affordable. Do we? I think, I think as it is, can we do that instead of while? As it is?
As it becomes affordable.
Well, I, I do think, honestly, this was, again, the council has acted, um, with a thoughtful and measured approach to debt issuers, and, um, you've done this. I mean, this, I would check this box because you took advantage of the opportunity when it existed. And, you know, hopefully the goal is to continue to do that as it's fiscally responsible to do so. And I, I'm not worried about this council at all. I think you all are very cognizant of the fiscal, the desire to be fiscally responsible. You're not spending thrifts.
So, I changed it to say, issue debt as it is affordable.
Or as it is responsible.
Responsiblely.
Responsibly.
Fiscally responsible.
There you go.
Okay. We have the opportunity to increase, increase size of staff as city develops.
Yep.
Something else that we were just talking about is, uh, as we bring on these new, if you think about the, the new growth that's happening, um, each one of those has also charged the utility fees on their utility bill, and so that actually increases the, the pool of what we have to spend on some of the, the project, projects. So, I think that's absolutely right. Um. Plan for transition to home rule is an opportunity.
That's a second.
That's redundant.
Yeah. Do we do that?
Yeah.
Fourth one down from the top.
Okay, thank you. Uh, act on drainage improvement needs is definitely an opportunity.
Oh, yes.
I think we might, I'm gonna put an asterisk by that, because we need to add that to threat, uh, to weaknesses. Uh, carefully develop around the airport to not affect the quality of life for area residents. Um. We have that opportunity still, to pre, uh, prepare a utility master plan.
In process.
To.
You should put the word adversely affect. To not adversely affect the quality of life, 'cause we do things at the airport, like skydiving, that improves the quality of life.
I like it. All right. I changed to not adversely affect the quality of life.
Yep.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and leave, uh, reserve the right to make it better. Uh, next opportunity, to prepare a utility master plan.
Underway.
Underway, not there. Revise the uniform development ordinance.
Uh, yeah.
Underway, potentially?
I'd like to suggest you change that to transition from the current development ordinance to a UDO. We're not inventing a new UDO, we're making the old stuff better and modernizing it.
Revising codes and ordinances into, uh, a unified.
Yeah, you're really not revising it, because you don't have a UDO. You're actually.
Revising the current, the outdated.
Development codes.
Well, it's not just development codes. I mean, it's, it's our codes, it's subdivision ordinance.
Development ordinance, then.
We don't have a development ordinance. We have ordinances about development, but we don't have like a specific development ordinance. We have subdivision ordinance.
Subdivision ordinance and a, um.
We have a lot of other ordinances about, that affect.
About housing?
Uh, zoning ordinance, yeah. We have a subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, which affects development.
Revise, uh, create, um, okay, I'm, I'm gonna put an asterisk by there, and we'll, we'll change that to say, um, revise outdated ordinances to create a unified development ordinance. Uh, plan for a new civic center. Okay, plan for a new civic center.
Partway underway.
Yep.
Now, this says a civ, a civic center, not a community center. Do we wanna change the nomenclature, or was it the idea to have a civic?
I thought they were the same.
Are we okay with ci, um, community center?
I think civic is, is a good, pretty broad term. Could encompass a lot of things. If you put community center in there, it's kinda limiting.
Okay, well, let's revisit that when we come back in June, because I think that that is too broad. Uh, improve community engagement. We definitely have the opportunity to do that, and we are getting there. Improve parks. Again, great job on improving the parks. That parks master plan, uh, as the foundation with the, the action the council has taken has been outstanding.
You should say, improve parks and create new parks, because we don't just wanna improve the ones we have. We've got a whole half of the city that doesn't have any.
Add. Additional. Okay. I'm just gonna leave it as add additional. We can fine tune that in, uh, in June. Uh, set Casterville as a place above the rest. I think we still have that opportunity. Support existing businesses and grow new ones as needed. Again, progress, but not there. Use Use military resources as incubators for development. Still love that idea. Oh, and along that lines, we do have the Veterans Job Fair. That's coming up next week. It's next week, right? Wednesday.
Yes.
Wednesday of next week.
Yes.
That's correct.
Great participation so far. We've got, what, what were the latest numbers?
At least eight or nine different employers.
They love snatching up the military.
Mm-hmm.
Whether they're just separated and retiring because they have experience.
And we have a really great group. I mean, ACOG has leaned in with this. EMC has leaned in with this. We've gotten some, some other.
GOMD is supporting it.
What's that?
GOMD is supporting it. There's a veterans group that's supporting it. The county veterans affairs group is supporting it.
Chamber of Commerce is supporting it.
Good publicity out of it.
Yeah, we sent a notice out through the American Legion about it.
Invest in the training and development of the staff. I think we still have opportunities there. Develop a shared vision that results in plans of action. Again, kudos to, to council. I think that we've done a great job in, in doing that, in, in creating that vision, sharing it, communicating it, and, and asking for feedback. Plan for economic development, land and facilities to leverage. Again, in process through the EDC. Great progress on that, still an opportunity. Threats. Sprawl from San Antonio.
Yep.
Challenges of new population overwhelming us. Inability to respond to growth. Lack of funding. Economic downturn, which we're seeing, it's actually been a benefit. State legislature, legislature attacks on city resources. Highway 90 redevelopment without city input. And we will talk about that a little bit more in a second. We still have border issues, flooding, and natural disasters, absolutely. Getting the home rule charter process wrong is a threat. Do we need to add or remove anything?
Yeah, thank you, Eddie.
Okay. So now we're going to go into some, some meat here. We're going to talk about the strategic focus areas. So I think you put these, now Scott added these to the back as well. So if you want to look at them, the very, very back of your packet, go in just a few pages to page 12, and that's where I'm going to start. And so these are. Oh, wait, no. Page 13. Okay, so we have the strategic focus areas with the guiding principles attached. So the, the strategic focus areas of the unified were five. Economic development, planning and infrastructure, governance and policy, organizational excellence, and community engagement and fund. Under economic development. The guiding principle is the city of Casterville will promote a strong and diverse economy that strengthens the local sales tax and property tax base while also contributing to a high quality of life. The planning and infrastructure guiding principle is that we will provide excellent planning and infrastructure, in infrastructure and facilities that meet the need of the citizens and businesses and staff. We need to rewrite that for grammar. The guiding principle for governance and policy is that we'll ensure a positive environment for its government, for the city governance, and establish policy, policies that prepare for growth while supporting the historic nature of the community. The guiding principle for organizational excellence is the city of Casterville will provide staffing, resources, and facilities that support the service needs of the community. And the guiding principle for community engagement and fund is the city of Casterville will foster a sense of place and tell its story in a positive manner that improves the quality of life in the community. Does anybody have any issues with the, the guiding principles on any of those or the five primary strategic focus areas? Okay. So part of what we're going to be talking about with, with the city administrator evaluations moving forward is we really need to start, and Scott had mentioned this. We need to start focusing in on these, keying in on the things that are the most important, starting to prioritize so that he can have something that is provenable.
A lot of this is me just trying to rein in our mayor. He's fantastic. He has a lot of great ideas. And I have to remind him that we don't have as many resources as he does have ideas. So in all seriousness, we, you know, what I would like to do over these six areas is, the goal is that as we talk about these, I, I need to understand what is really and truly the highest priority? What is the thing that you, because we do have limited resources and we can't do it all. It doesn't mean that we, that I'll just say, okay, well then I'm taking that one off the list, we aren't going to do it. There'll still be, to the extent possible, we're still going to try to accomplish all these things, but I need to know what are the three most important? What, what are you, if you had to narrow it down to just two or three, what are those things that you absolutely need me to focus on for the next? And then we'll fill in the blank depending on the term of my contract. 12, 12 months, 24 months, 36 months? What, what time period are you going to give me to focus on those things? And how are we going to define success mutually? So part of this is the lead up to the executive session discussion that the mayor was just referring to is to kind of think about, okay, how do we? How do we put these in terms of success, to define success for, so that I know I'm doing what I should be doing? And at the end of that period of time, we can collectively, you know, look at each other and say, okay, this is what we, this was the mission, the hill we told you to go and take, and you took it. You know? That's, I mean, for me personally, that's, that's what I want to try to arrive at with you all. And it's also, that's kind of where I get my greatest sense of satisfaction. There's an immense sense of satisfaction if you know and can look back on and say, you know, with, with some level of certainty that the city gave me a mission and, and I fulfilled it.
And I think that this, what we've talked about before is this actually becomes the foundation of the balanced scorecard. And so we're not choosing between the five items. We're choosing between the items underneath that so that they can prioritize and determine which ones are the most important. Because each one of these is, is critical. If they are the, the key focus areas, that is across the board. And then we just need to make sure that we are helping prioritize what we expect for Scott.
Yeah, what project, objective, or outcome is it? What, underneath each one of these that you think is absolutely essential in a specific timeframe, but.
And I think this is going to take a lot more work. We're going to begin it here, but I encourage each of you to, to continue to go through this. We're going to cover some of it now, but let's put a lot of thought to this and come back together as a council and give very clear direction as much as possible. It helps drive clarity. Okay, so under planning and infrastructure, we have.
Did we skip economic development?
No, did I?
Are we going?
Oh, I'm so sorry, no, I, I had this upside down.
Okay. It does get confused. We print it out, it prints like a calendar or something.
There you go, okay, economic development. So what we had talked about, there are three categories, and that is what are we going to do for existing businesses? And that is increasing revenue to existing businesses and improve tourism. And then for new businesses, attract new businesses, seek developable land. I think it is seeking us right now. Be sensitive to existing development when, development, when developing land around the airport. And I, I think that these are things that we should revisit and reevaluate. But I don't think there's anything that's substantially impactful. I, I think that the council decisions and in partnership and communication, the relationship that we've developed with the Chamber of Commerce, with local businesses, doing things to support them all as much as possible. Bringing on Darren Hamm to assist with business development and a lot of the work that he's done along, along that area. I think that the council's actually done a really great job of that. I don't know that there's a substantial that we, amount that we can add to that, but let's.
Well, I would suggest that each one of these, the intention, my reflection from the workshop, the intention was to kind of, these were drill downs. And so like the supporting resources one, it's, the concept was to utilize the, the environment, the economic environment we're in, and use those existing resources to leverage economic development. So that's why you have the four that we have there, attract a community college, seek out a medical development, because we have, because there's a lot of colleges in the San Antonio area. I think that was the thought process. Seek out medical development, optimize military retirees and develop around the airport.
So, and, and Scott had actually pointed out something. We had talked about this on, on a slight level, but really not dug into it. If you haven't noticed, there have been a couple of data centers that are popping up all around. And, and Scott felt it was very prudent. I totally agree that we include this as supporting resources.
Well, it's either supporting resources or it might be under just new businesses. We were talking about attracting new business.
I think it's one or the other.
Yeah.
But, but the point, and I just wanted to quantify that for you. With a, with a data center, you get, right now, a typical data center is, I don't know, 60 megawatts, 100 megawatts. Out of a 100 megawatt facility, they're typically having between 100 and 200 acres. And what that generates is, as you look at the different, the different categories, so that's ad valorem tax. So a 100 megawatt data center is probably roughly a billion dollars. I'm going to say that again, a billion dollars.
Our total tax, just for, for context, our total tax value is about 270 million.
Was it? I thought it was 330.
Maybe, maybe they could build the last dollar here, so I apologize.
I think, I think.
It's in that range, yes. 270, 330, it's in that range. And we're talking about a billion, you know, one, one factory, for lack of a better term, being a billion dollars.
And that is, that is every year that you would get that. The, the sales tax on it typically, they'll spend close to that, a half to three quarters of that, probably on a rotating five-year basis. Because they do pay, they pay tax on the new servers and the new equipment that comes in when they make infrastructure improvements.
They get taxed on their electricity too.
Well, that's the other thing.
Franchise fees.
Franchise fees and sales tax. Oh, no.
Franchise.
Businesses do not pay, no, businesses, that's right, they do pay sales tax on power. So what I had figured out with these different elements is it's roughly seven, seven and a half million dollars to the city for a single 100 megawatt data center.
Now, that's before any incentives, but still.
Before any incentives. Well, the same thing with, yeah.
You're talking about getting a data center in the city limits?
Inside the city limits, right. Outside, it affects, it impacts our, our county property taxes or our county taxes because they can, as they bring in more revenue from these, they, it has similar effect to, to the county for the stuff that they get. But I just wanted to kind of frame that up. If you think about 100, 200 acres, most of that is open space because they create big buffer zones around it. The amount of employees for something like that is not substantial. If you think about, call it even just 100, 100 acres, that's. Call it a third of the size of Cobblestone. So that's 300 homes that would generate, you know, 15 million, 15 million dollars in total revenue or.
Value.
Value or a billion dollars. And the amount of traffic that's added to that. They're typically really good corporate citizens. So just the, the overall, the negative impact, you get utility, either fees or franchise fees, you get sales tax.
How do you, in our city limits, do we have the electricity to support the data center?
We do not, but we don't have any more service area for electricity. There are areas that are in our E T J that are serviced either by city public service or by Medina Electric.
Yes, wouldn't be serviced by the city of capital utilities, it'd probably be Medina Electric or CPS.
Depending on where they are. We would, and there are some, so there are some data centers that use a lot of water and some that use very little water. So we would get the water, we would get the wastewater if they were one of the ones that used the, the water cooler. So the impact, the positive impact to us, I, I wanted to frame that up and actually quantify it. Let you know, one of the reasons that we are, we are, are pursuing that as a great option because it creates open space. If you look at all of the funding needs that we have, even if you give incentives, you take three times what our general fund revenue is right now. Even if you put incentives in there, maybe you only get twice. You still get twice what you already have. So I think that that, if you're okay with that, I would like to include that on.
It's a low-impact.
High value.
High yield.
Revenue generating facility. It's not going to pollute our environment and it's not going to make a lot of noise and.
And they're typically very good corporate citizens.
Option.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have issues with that?
No.
Including that, okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Let's see, so we have economic development. We're going to move on then to. Planning and infrastructure. This one's a big one. So the three items that we have, traffic, city services, and development, redevelopment, and planning. So starting off with traffic, my favorite topic. I think that I have sent a unified message to every one of our state and federal elected officials and anybody that will listen, that traffic is a huge problem. Highway 90 is a huge problem. And I, I think I've been pretty clear about that. We, and, and, and we'll talk about that here in a second. So the, under here is improve traffic flow in the area. And I think it actually goes beyond improved traffic flow in the area. It's also, I think it is connect. North, south Casterville? I'm going to write this, but you can change it or, or strike it if you deem that appropriate. And. Okay, so what I'd like to do is.
It's somehow getting the two parts of town physically connected.
Yeah, well.
Overpasses or underpasses.
Yeah, and that's part of it. So if you remember the, the journey series, what we had heard about was different ways that you can reduce the walk time from curb to curb. Part of, on, on street. Part of that is looking at like the underpasses, like we had talked about. We'll go into that, what we have been looking at with that in just a second. But like boulevarding Highway 90 so that you don't have, you're not trying to go 90 feet or 100 feet or 300 feet across trying to get from one side to the other. Or trying to drive from my house to the, the post office on a Saturday afternoon. It's impossible. So it's finding these ways to, to reduce the impact of the scar that was written through here 80 years ago. And making sure that we don't continue to widen that scar instead of repairing that scar as we start moving out east or out west, especially out east right now. That to me is, is one of the most critical, critical areas. Build a Highway 90 bypass. We have begun efforts on that, but I think that we need to continue with that and refine that message. We made great strides there that is being engineered right now. I'm not thrilled with the, what I've seen come out of that, but, but we definitely have some work to do. And I think that we need to further define what we would expect from that, that northern route as, as it moves. Just north of, of city limits and then potentially as it continues to go to the west. Continue implementation of the street plan. Great progress on that. I think we did, I did a back of the napkin calculation. I think we did 11% of the streets since we committed to this.
Yeah, I believe so.
It's about 11%. And we're trying to hit 10 years, which is about 10% a year. So we are definitely on track with that. Partner with other entities for traffic improvement, so that's county, state, and ISD.
Cooperation, Eric?
Yeah.
And I, I think I'm going to, I'm going to take a pause as we get through this and I'm going to talk to you about some of the stuff. Can you just get ready to pull up that, that email that we've gotten from Tech dot?
I was about to, yeah.
If you want to queue that up, I'll, I'll go through the rest of this stuff. So develop a countywide transfer, okay, wait, no, sorry. Continue implementation of the street plan, we talked about that. Partnering with the other entities. We have done tremendous strides in the last year to do this. We'll talk about, in a second, we'll talk about what has happened so far and what I really believe that we need to do going forward, how we would actually implement this and make it actionable. And then the other one is develop a countywide transportation plan. We still have the opportunity to do that, including Tech dot. And that is something that I have expressed interest both to the, the former county judge and to the new county judge, and our commissioner and the commissioners around us. We need to be doing this as a holistic project and, and include Tech dot in that conversation. So we've made really great sides with it, strides with that. City services is the next one. So provide city services to match needs. So you use growth for expanding utilities and other services. If you look back to a great example of this, Clay Benford put together a, an agreement between multiple different parties to expand our water services with, with respect and Russell Presine. Scott worked with them on increasing our wastewater, our sewage facilities to be able to accommodate that growth. And the way that, especially on the water side, the way that it was structured was absolutely brilliant, that it is paid for. Finding ways to attach it to other means so that we're not putting ourselves out there for 10 or 15 million dollars that could come back and bite us. So structuring these things in a way that we have a plan for increasing our utility capacity, making sure that new growth is paid. So, structuring these things in a way that we have a plan for increasing our utility capacity, making sure that new growth is paying for it, and eliminating the risk to the existing citizens that could potentially get stuck, uh, owning that during an economic downturn like this. So, I, I've gotta go back and give kudos to, to our, our city attorney, Clay Benford, for putting these things together during, uh, slowdowns he had anticipated, but he also built in some amazing safeguards to be able to make that happen. Establishing a utility master plan, again, to Scott's point, that has begun, that is one of the things that we need to, uh, keep on there as, uh, our priorities, like to identify where those are, uh, begin drainage improvements.
Made a baby step.
Mm-hmm.
Made a baby step to be, to begin the, the understanding of what needs to be done, and now we'll continue on with that. Uh, grow the infrastructure in a planned, rather than reactive manner. Uh, I think that the economic downturn has given us a slight reprieve from the onslaught that was had, that was hitting us, and, um, and I think that, under Scott's leadership, our, um, our advisors, our engineers have done a really good job of planning for that, understanding where that needs to happen, even creating some flexibility. If you think about what happened with Cobblestone, trying to create flexibility that, um, could serve immediate needs as well as long-term needs. So, uh, kudos, Scott, on, to you and, and the whole team for putting that together so incredibly well, and continuing to work on that. Develop facilities master plan. We've talked about that at a high level, I know Scott's done a lot of work on that, on anticipating that. I think that that is another one that we would put on there as either a high priority or a low priority, depending on what the, the needs of the city are. Uh, and then continue historic preservation of city facilities. Again, that's still something I think is, is quite important. Scott's made some strides to, to make some improvements, some, uh, some fixes. We still need to put Castroville back on the, on the roof, but, um-
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Yeah. Did you guys, we talked about that already, right?
What's that?
The roof. Used to say Castroville. If you look at historic-
Yeah, they, they talked about it, uh, at the last meeting.
Yeah. So, it said Castroville on it, and then when, uh, I think it was-
Airplanes fly over.
I think it was when, uh, when you guys, you guys were here, uh, when we replaced the roof? I think that was back when Tim Kelly was here, uh, and I think nobody realized that we need to put Castroville back on, that's what the pilots would-
What I don't plan, right?
So, I think that would be something-
Get up there with some rollers, particularly.
I told him I got a can of spray ca, spray paint.
Stop by, stop by the store.
Can I buy the store and get some paint?
Paint, paint rollers.
And then development, redevelopment, and planning. So, under here, we have revised zoning and land use assumptions. Complete the Unified Development Ordinance, the U D O. Uh, continue implementation of the capital improvements plan. Seek out opportunities to replace existing streetlights with decorative and more historic streetlights.
Can we add, um, um, dark skies compliant?
Yeah, we, I don't know that needs to be stated.
More appropriate.
Seems like you'd wanna have sidewalks if you're gonna be worried about the streetlights.
Yeah, I wonder if, honestly-
We don't have anything about sidewalks.
Just my, from my perspective, it's a very specific thing, the, the, the existing streetlights, and I'm not trying to call anybody out, but I think this was, my recommendation was this was something Philip brought up, but as I consider this, just, again, from my perspective-
More tactical?
This needs to be part of that-
C I B.
Yes, part of the downtown master plan, you know, what, what types of lights, the lights themselves, the sidewalks, the streets, the landscaping, the streetscaping, the signage, all of that is part of a downtown plan. Strides, lights by themselves, if we didn't do those other things, would be lipstick on a pig. I mean, you're right, because there wouldn't be sidewalks, there wouldn't be the other elements that make it a-
So, I'm gonna recommend that we move this over to, uh, any master planning effort that we have and remove it from this, this item here. Does that work? Okay. Uh, Scott, can you pull up that, uh-
Yep.
That map? Okay, so I'm gonna go back, uh, and if you can zoom up on, how about zoom up on Alstation Oaks? Yeah, right there.
Oh.
You were there.
And actually, yeah, let's, let's start with that. So, this is what we got from, uh, from Tech Dot. We have, so as a recap, we have been working with Tech Dot at least once a quarter, sometimes more often, eh, I guess, on average of about once a quarter. Um, sometimes more often, sometimes we've had a couple of lags, like during the holidays, uh, but trying to work with them as closely as possible to have a unified, um, approach to this. Uh, we kinda got caught off guard, um, a month ago or so, where we saw this concept that we had not, they hadn't approached us about it, they kinda did this in a vacuum. Uh, this is called a super street. So, what that is, if you, um, stop scrolling.
They've got medians.
No. So, if you're, uh, if you notice, this is, the circle K is right above where it says 471. So, if somebody from Alstation Oaks is coming out of Alstation Oaks, they've got to take their kid to, uh, to the high school, they can't go across the street there. That light does not exist.
Take a right, take a left.
They have to take a right, uh, that's a left. They have to take a right.
Well, they could make a left and come all the way down here, turn on that other road, right? Why not?
They can't turn, can't turn left, come on up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, they can't, you're right.
Well, that's the other thing, if they want to go, so now, they wanna go into San Antonio to go work, they're gonna have to come out, take a right, do a turnaround, and do another right.
If you've been up 281 north of 410.
Heavens.
That's actually what they're, 281 by heaven, bro, they, they, they call them smart intersections, and that's what they're talking about doing.
Saw a lot of that on the west coast. Saw a lot of that on the west coast, and then watching people sleep.
So, this to me is, uh, and I express this, I, I think this is very problematic. Uh, Scott, can you go over to, uh, they have the, the cross-sections down on the bottom? Might have to zoom out to find that, or just go down again. Uh, I guess maybe over the left side.
The left side.
Yeah. There we go. So, if you look at this, this cross-section-
That's the existing.
That's the existing proposed, so these are two different proposals. If you look at the one on the top, uh, so you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 lanes. So, that's a right lane, 2 through lanes, 2 left lanes.
I don't know why this is an issue, I think it looks great.
Plus a, plus a median, which is gonna be another 20 feet.
Uh, and the median's okay.
And they're just trying to make the Californians feel at home.
Exactly.
Those are 12-foot lanes each, yeah, so that's-
So, this is-
I can't read it.
This is, this is increasing the size of the scar.
215-foot right away, yeah. 207, 300-foot left.
So, now, when you, when you look at this versus what we saw, like with John Anderson-
Right.
Instead of having these big wide, uh, what he had talked about is, and Steve Oo had talked about that as well, uh, and there are major efforts from the U S Department of, of Transportation with Connecting America. They have grants and money that's out there to, uh, help cities deal with, um, places where they've been divided by streets, by rivers, and by railroads, and we have two of the three. And at the same time, the U S D O T is trying to do that, and we're trying to connect Castroville. They're, the efforts here would widen it.
Just the pavement alone is 160 feet wide.
I, I wanna brag a little bit on the mayor, um, not that he needs this, but just, it's bragging, it's also just to make y'all, y'all aware, and something I've, I mean, it gets frustrating, 'cause he, 'cause he'll go have conversations, and he'll come and tell me all about them. But, he's been developing a strategy by talking to everybody he can think of, uh, without, you know, any real direction from me, or EMC, or anybody else. And I think he's, uh, done an excellent job of identifying kind of which knobs to pull, and, yeah, I think we're really, really close to understanding who we have to get in front of to make what, you know, to fix this, so that this doesn't happen to us, so that we can go to the table and present a collective, um, approach, as opposed to kind of what's happening right now. And so, like, just today, I don't know how many, I don't know if y'all are aware, but today, he drove up to Austin at 6:30 in the morning-
5:30.
Five, or 5:30 in the morning, and, um, met with a former, um, chair of one of the transportation committees in, in Texas. He's no longer an elected official, but he was a senator in Texas, a state senator, and then, um, met with other folks, you know, had conversations, he done, and he's had a lot of these conversations. As he said earlier, you got every elected official, whether it be, uh, a U S Congressman, Senator, State Senator, um, we're trying to tell our story to, and in doing so, I think, um, we're finally trying to, have, have kinda narrowed it down to the group of folks that we need to get in front of to take in all these issues. So, I, I really think that, that's a valiant effort you've done, um, and hopefully it's gonna produce some fruit soon.
So, we now have support from, uh, from our state senator, Pete Flores. We actually went up there to, uh, he had invited, uh, to go and actually sit in on his swearing-in, which was kinda cool, uh, but we sat down with him for about a half an hour, and we talked about community priorities, and top one is this, I talked to him last week, and just said, "I'm gonna need your support on, on, uh, working with Tech Dot to accomplish not just what Tech Dot needs, which is getting people through, but getting what Castroville needs, which is allowing us to have, they, they want their through traffic, we want our local traffic, and they're not mutually exclusive. We need to find a way to make both happen." So, uh, he is in support of that, he will provide, uh, as we develop the plan, he will provide his written support for that, and, uh, assistance with the Senate, uh, the state senate, um, Andy Mur also, I've spoken with him, uh, we sat down for, I don't know if you knew this, so Shannon Beasley's daughter is now one of his aides.
No, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I saw, I'm like, "What are you doing up here?"
She's an intern aide.
She's a, yeah, she's a staff aide.
Yeah, she's a college kid.
Andy Mur.
Yeah, she's a college kid. Boy, she can't even graduate from college if she can't.
That would be too quick, yeah.
She did not do that in one year.
She's smart, good.
I know, I know.
So, we now have support for that, and again, this-
Man, they're halfway through.
Mike is the guy that we talked to, he was, until very recently, the head of the transportation, uh, committee for, uh, on the state senate, uh, so we will be talking to the current, uh, chair.
I'm, I'm confused. Are you saying we, we want this town?
No, no.
No, this further divides, you think about the scar, I've got a, I've got a scar on my, my head right here, and it's like pulling the scar wider and wider and wider.
Let's see, they're putting 60 feet of pavement. They wanna put in 10 lanes, where we now have four or five.
Rough.
So, what is, what is the alternative? How do we convince them not to do this?
Uh, I'll, I'll walk you through that.
Okay.
So, the alternative really is the boulevard, and that's actually, if you look at our master plan, I'll send something out to council.
I think I have a picture, uh, let me see if I can find it.
If you look at the one that I sent, uh, to Steph Noes, uh, it's, I, I put that, uh, I put the links to the different sections, you might, you find it, you know where it is.
Well, I don't know, are you talking about to our plan? To, to, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I've got a picture of the, of what Steve Oo drew. That's what we're talking about, Steve and John?
Well, if you look at our master plans, I think, uh, the one that was done, even, uh, 2013, 20 was the one that you had worked on, 2017, was it?
Even earlier.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's some from the 2013 plan that show, you know, the future, they, they, they had conceptualized a new city center east of town, and they also conceptualized what that boulevard would look like, and it's a million trees, is what it looks like, but-
And it's very similar to what, what we'd seen from Steve Oo and from, uh, John Anderson. So, that's what we want. It's basically, you let the, the local traffic stay local by creating, um, low speed, like 25 mile an hour, two-way access roads on both sides. You leave the two lanes going each way in the middle with a center turn lane, and you allow people, like, can you imagine how cool it would be to be able to go to, uh, tractor supply and come back to your place without having to go all the way up to victory lane or, uh, going the wrong, the freeway? Yeah, it's in that one.
It's in this one, I just gotta find it. I'll get it there.
So, that's what we're, we're pushing. Um, so that, what you just saw there was actually Tech Dot being a great partner, and reaching out to us and saying, you know, "We're working with all of these individual, um, developers, and we're not finding cohesion." And each one provides their traffic study, but not in relation to the other people's traffic studies, it's done in a box.
So, they're, so they're basically magnifying the traffic situation.
Right. And so, they're looking at their addition, not their compounded addition.
Wasn't it, wasn't it the one, Scott, where it had the, the thing that went over the highway?
Yeah, I was trying, I'm trying to find it. I, I'm pretty sure it's in this plan.
Yeah, it's in that plan. I can, I, I recognize the, um-
The artwork.
The artwork, yeah. So, um, so Tech Dot reached out, uh, this week and said, "We want to get together with, uh, with the city, with the developers, with Tech Dot, everybody come together, uh, and I'm gonna recommend we, we take a step even further than that, and I'll talk through that in a second." But, again, to their, to their credit, they are trying to work with us. Uh, when I, I talked to the former chair of the Transportation Committee, he said Tech Dot has actually changed the way that they're approaching things. They, he said, much, to a much greater degree, in the past, they would do things autonomously and not engage local.
It's all right if I were to do it.
I can't believe how it could have been worse. They, well, and they have engaged us, they've been, you know, very friendly, they have shown up, they have been very diligent to work with us, they have also been really great at saying no. So, it's finding a way that we can work together on capturing the funds, uh, on coming together on what works well for everybody. So, uh, we are gonna have that meeting in February, uh, and I'll let you know when that actually happens. We'll, we'll send out something if you can.
Yeah, I'll find it. Uh, yeah, I mean, I'll find it later. It's, it's not this one, though.
No, that's not it.
That shows one of those.
All right.
Okay, so-
Keep going.
What I'm gonna talk about is, um, the, the immediate, uh, so when we're looking at these, um, the city planning and infrastructure, uh, I think that, what I, what I was trying to do is, is figure out what, like, at a high level, if you think about all of the planning that needs to be done, we've already talked about a lot of it, for the utility planning, the drainage planning, we've got the drainage study, but we don't have the drainage plan. We have lots of plans that need to happen, uh, we have the downtown master plan that we still need to do, we have the thoroughfare plan that we still need to finish, uh, we have all of these different, we have the U D O, which I consider as a plan. And so, I wanted to, to categorize these things and look at them and say, "We can't do everything. We have to do everything, but we can't do it all right now. So, how do we start prioritizing that?" Um, and I, I separated it out at a very high level, the stuff that is in front of us right now, um, the U D O, I think, is, uh, one of the, the pieces of top importance, because when you look at our development agreements, they are based on our codes and ordinances. Our development agreements are the things that we want that are special, that are outside of what we can require, um, and so, by going through that process and quantifying those, determining what each one of those, uh, stylistic elements or quality elements is, and actually codifying it in the code, uh, we would give our, uh, city attorney, um, for development agreements, the, uh, the, the stuff that he needs to be able to implement that. So, that, I think, is crucial. And then I looked at other things, like, I think northern route, really, uh, kinda planning that out, I think that's important, it's not top priority. Highway 90, uh, in terms, there it is.
That's it, yeah.
That was easy to find.
Sorry, it was in 2016. It looked a lot, the artwork looks similar to the other one, but it was a different one.
Okay. So, that is basically what we're, uh, uh-
It's similar, it's not the same, but the concept is, the idea is, you can see the walkability of that intersection, and you see that they're trying, it's not the same, 'cause these lanes probably aren't as narrow as they would need to be under the new urbanist model, but, um, it's a good visual depiction of what we're talking about.
Actually, you have a really great picture, I thought they did in the presentation they did a couple of months ago, didn't they take one of those?
Yeah, there's another, they, uh, they have shown something similarly to that, but you get the, you get the idea, I don't wanna hyper-focus on that.
Here's another one.
Yep. And so, it is creating this, this ability to get across with a car, with a, a person, with, uh, my, my neighbor who takes a scooter all the way over to, to Walmart, that's great. So, it's trying to, to create these, these things. So, um, the other things that I looked, so hi, the, uh, downtown master plan, the, uh, the northern route, and these are more focused, specific things, uh, and then Highway 90, what else did I put on there? It was-
Highway 90, northern U D O, and downtown master plan, those are the four, and then-
And then I separated-
Aspects of each, because you have your master planning after.
Well, so then I separated, and this is for our media planning, the thing that I think is our most immediate need is, uh, I think the U D O is, uh, is crucial, so that we can give people a more definite-
It's the tool.
It is the tool. It is codifying what we're asking for from people, so that we don't have to tell them a one-up every single time. So, anybody that comes here knows what to expect and can repeat it easily. The other thing, as I walked through all of these things, I really think that the next most important, I separated Highway 90 into three parts. So, you have historic Castroville, so that's the river to the hill, you have, um, the east part, which is where most of the development is happening, and that is basically that, what they showed us right there, that is the east part. So, that basically goes from- So that basically goes from, I think, from country lane to Victory Lane. I think what happens beyond Victory Lane, do your super street, open it up as wide as you want, but that's a good opening point, because that's hitting right about where the Northern Route, right at where the Northern Route is going to be at. You can open it up 100% there, because then they'll have through traffic, ultimately we'll be able to take the Northern Route or the route through town. And so, open it up east of that.
Yeah, it, it, it's doing that on its own, I'm not doing anything here. It did this earlier.
So, and then the final piece would be that center Highway 90, and that's basically from country lane to the river. I think. Basically to the river. So.
The bridge is going to be an issue.
Yeah.
But, I mean, they can't widen it, because they're not going to be able to widen, widen it on the west side of the, the river.
Right.
But having, just creating those, those different things.
Two parts, you can't take Parkland or highways. So that's why they can never widen 90.
And so, I think that, that, to me, and I want to, I want to get feedback from you, I think the two most important things that we need to concentrate right now and be willing to invest in is the Highway 90 East that I just described. I think that we should actually hire somebody to come in and help us out with that. We've explored multiple options, and it's really kind of interesting, the one option I think is our best option, I just realized today. So he's, he's done, his company has done work for Bastrop, for Bandera, they did good planning work, didn't get implemented because they couldn't agree. Taylor, San Marcos, he's done, he came as the top recommendation from the former chair of the, the Transportation Division, as somebody that was experienced and talented at working with Tech Dot, who understands what I, what I call old Castroism. They call it new urbanism, but I don't like that, so I call it old Castroism, but it's that traditional style that we're trying to get, that is that small-town feel on the small-town scale. He has a tremendous amount of experience doing this, and it turns out, I just realized today, that when I was on planning and zoning, right after Brianna started, working at the city, Hill Country Alliance put on a, a seminar in Kerrville that I attended. It was me and Brianna and Kathy, and we came, came out of that inspired. Inspired, as inspired as what we've gone through with the Journey Series, and thought it was a great thing. I didn't, that was the guy.
He was one of the speakers.
He was, he was the presenter, the one that was doing that.
That's awesome.
And, so, anyway, I thought that was really good. I have talked to him, I, I think that, that to me, right now, if we didn't get, and this is not for decision tonight, but if you're okay with it, I would like to bring that back for, for decision on our next meeting, because the timing for this is getting something done before Tech Dot gives this to, plan to the developers and says, "Go build this." I want them to do something that is better, but to do that, we need to have somebody that is experienced in dealing with the traffic patterns, with the walkable patterns, with the boulevarding process.
And with the bureaucracy.
And with the bureaucracy. So if we can have this ready for our meeting with Tech Dot and the.
Is he simple city design?
Simple city, yes.
So, the, what I desperately need from all of you is to know your level of support for what the mayor's proposing, and, but what the mayor and I need to propose to you on January 24th, when we come back, is who's going to do what? Because if I, as I've expressed to him, you know, we've, I, I've got a very interested group of people doing the downtown redevelopment, and they are bringing in consultants and experts, right and left. And they're great, these are, each one of them are phenomenal. The issue is the city can't afford to pay all these people. We can't, we can't have 18 consultants. And so we've got, you know, and, and a lot of them, again, they're very good, so we're going to have to decide, okay, for instance, for signs, there's a consultant that, that came in, that was, that did the signs for the pearl, and just did this phenomenal job. Well, it's, you know, $60,000 to, to have her come in and breed, have their company do our signs. The downtown master plan.
Didn't bring that to you, by the way.
What's that?
I said, "We did not bring that to council."
No, we haven't brought these, but these are things that we've started, taught, we've had some conversations with some of these folks, and I don't want to be seen as, you know, the, "Boy, you've carved wool," or whatever, you know, that we're having these conversations and saying, "Yeah, yeah, we're going to give you business," and then we don't. We had the gentleman that was, he's a, he's with the University of Notre Dame, he's got his own consultancy company. And so, I, what I'm going to work with the mayor on is put together, okay, the list of who's doing what. How are we going to go about structuring the consultant group to accomplish the specific jobs? And he's just proposed, what you've just heard him propose is a downtown master plan, a transportation plan, and, what was it, a UDO. Those are the three. Now, the danger is that I, I and anybody else can make the logical leap that, okay, well, but if you're going to do the UDO, well, then you really do land use planning, and you look at your master plan, and there's a lot of other elements that are related that would be good to do as well. But every time you bring one of those up, number one, you can find five experts who do a really good job at that thing, that may be slightly better than the guy that you have doing your UDO, for instance. So, I need us to, to, to decide, kind of, like, if we're going to keep moving, like, who's going to do what, and, and what we're actually going to try and accomplish, what is the goal and objectives? And I think that was, and I want to make sure that the council's on board. So, that'll be our mission on the 24th, is to bring back a plan of who's doing what, and what we believe are the three main priorities, and we'll talk about some of this again in executive session.
Yeah, and we'll talk about some of the, the pricing that we've seen behind that.
So, so you're saying we need a consultant to do the boulevard plan, so we can have the ability to sell. We need a consultant to do the downtown revitalization.
No, downtown master plan. It's not revitalization, it's downtown master plan. What does this look like? What do we?
That's kind of the same thing, though, honestly. Usually, the downtown master plan's purpose is to revitalize downtown.
Same thing as the parks' master plan, is to revitalize the parks.
Sure.
And then the UDO is the third, the third rail, or the bypass?
No, well, I, I think that if you separate it out, it is transportation planning as a whole, in a, a way that is not your conventional, but the traditional, something that is less absolutely 100% car-centric through traffic, and that's it. So that's, that's one part of it, and that does include the bypass, that does include Highway 90, that includes some, some high-level transportation planning. So there's, there's components of that that are, are taken into consideration when you're doing city planning. So UDO, the, the, what do you call it? Thoroughfare plan and the downtown master plan are kind of three big buckets. I think that the highest rate of return that we get right now, UDO and East Highway 90, where things are happening.
You asked for three points, ended up with two, so basically addressed growth, and the next two words were plan and strategy, business development, and infrastructure development, and then that is all, that is all facilitated by having UDO.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, again, what I'm pushing for is, what are the, what are the, what are the actual specific objectives that we want to try to establish? Not just broad strokes, we have broad strokes in our plan, but in what timeframe and what are we accomplishing, right? And I think that's, to the mayor's credit, that's what he's trying to zone in on, and, you know, what I would point out is, what is, what, from our, tonight's discussion, what's missing from those three? Well, it's the drainage. There's no mention of drainage. I want to make it, I want to make it clear to you all, that even though that's not one of the three that you say are the major priorities, we've got to get these done, doesn't mean I'm going to say, "Okay, well, I guess we don't care about drainage, we're not doing anything on that." We still have a whole host of other things, but it helps me understand, look, success is going to be defined by getting these three things done, moving these three things across the goal. These other items are going to be there, and you're going to address them, and you'll get kudos for trying to get those done as well, but these are the three most important. It's about prioritizing, not saying that they aren't important, but what is most important?
Under, under infrastructure, I had traffic drainage utilities. And that's, that was it. I mean, it doesn't take me long to come up with that.
I just want to narrow those down to projects, to actually project-specific, let's get this done, so.
So what I'll come back to you, the next meeting with, is, is a proposal, unless, and this is open for discussion, I wanted to put this out there, it's trying to figure out what is, we have lots of things that are the most important, for different reasons. And so the way that I'm trying to prioritize this right now is, what, if it, if we don't do it, what is going to, like, if we don't do East Highway 90, they're going to do it a different way, and it will be lost.
I think it's an emergency situation.
I think it is an emergency situation. I also struggled with the, I, I struggled with asking for council to financially support this, because we've always said that new pays for new, but I really believe, and I really, I fought over this inside my head, I think that this is an investment in the people who live here, because what we're doing, this isn't, this is dealing with the new growth. But the new growth is going to happen, whether it's here, or in Hondo, or up 471.
It's also dealing with an existing problem.
It's dealing with an existing problem, and it's trying to minimize the impact of all of the stuff that's happening around us on the existing people.
And the existing, that existing problem was very high on the list of our citizens' complaints.
Yep. So, is there, is there, does anybody have an issue with me bringing that back for those, those two priorities with Scott's caveat, that we need to nail this down to who does it, why do they do it, what do we want from them?
And how much does it cost? It's got to be in the.
So, and I can give you some ballparks. I think that I had looked at, which one did he say? It was.
Well, you, Herb, you're talking about the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, when you bring back the cost.
No, 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 he's not asking right, not for a price right now, let's not give him the price right now.
I can give it to you, okay.
No, let's not.
But I'll bring that back to you.
Whatever you say is going to be wrong.
No, it will not cost, yes, it will not cost millions. Well, everything. Okay, so. So we'll come back, and we'll continue to, to mess with this. What I'm going to, what I'm going to ask, I think the rest are really important, but we're getting pretty late here. Can we postpone this for another time? Is that all right?
Postpone this, yeah.
The last three things.
The other three things. In the meantime, go back, study these, pick them apart, make your notes on them, we'll revisit it either next meeting or the following, I'd kind of like to do it next meeting if we can, and then let's move on to the next agenda item. We all right with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, next item. Is executive session, sorry, I was just making sure that I covered everything, I didn't cover everything, but it's close enough. Executive, executive session, so pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney, the City Council may convene in executive session to receive advice from the city attorney regarding the following. The items under discussion are Joint Airport Zoning Board and Airport Hazard Zoning Issues and Related Matters. Next item is Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, entitled Deliberation Regarding Real Property to Deliberate the Purchase of Real Property, Parkland Acquisition Opportunities. The next item is Texas Government Code, Section 551.085, entitled Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and the topic is, or the subject is NP Homes Development Agreement. And then finally, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, entitled Personnel Matters to Deliberate the Employment Evaluation Duties of a Public Officer or Employee, and the subject of that is City Administrator Contract Renewal. We're going into executive session at, lordy, 9:52. 9:52.
You're the only ones here, why do we have to leave?
Because you saw, we're broadcasting.
He, he can probably lock the doors.
No.
She said, "He can probably lock the doors." Unless he wants you to just stay here. I mean, I'm going to lock the doors anyway, because there's no sense in having.
And he has to get back here at 6 o'clock in the morning.
I might, I might still be here.
Yeah.
Oh. He is going to be on for 18 minutes. We lock his door. I'm going to be there.
No, I'm going to be there.